Thank you for joining us this evening. March the 8th, school board meeting. We'll call Mr. Romano.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Present.
Mr. Schaaf.
Present.
Mrs. Delaney.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
And Mr. Rudy is en route.
Yes, he's en route.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, item 3.01 is our future focus presentation. It's work that, as administrators, we do every year, but I feel like we're doing one of those, "this is how the sausage is made" kind of presentations because this year there are just new factors in looking at enrollment, looking at our facilities and space usage planning, as well as our staffing. And so, we want to make sure that we are being really clear about the things we know about, that we're being really clear about the things that we don't know about, and clear about the things that we might know. We know that it's coming, but it's unknown at this moment. And so, Dr. Foltz has created a presentation and different team members have participated in it. We'll be able to bring more clarity to kind of our status as we sit here, March 2021, and what we plan for the fall. Because a lot, it just seems like this time of year, like, once things get started, they don't slow down. And so, we're trying to be as prepared and as thoughtful and as focused on horizon planning as we can. So, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Foltz.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Board. Today, we're going to talk about future-focused district enrollment facilities and staffing. So, in an effort to continue to move our district in an onward and upward direction, the purpose of today is to get a better understanding of the following questions. How has enrollment projection versus enrollment realities impacted our district facilities since the 2019 boundary change? What factors impact district enrollment and use of space? How can we strengthen our staffing model to increase our impact on student success? And finally, how do we maximize our investments to fill learning gaps? All right, so last month at the Board's Work Session, Ellie Preston outlined the vital teaching and learning resources and support needed to close that learning gap and to move our kids in an onward and upward direction in learning. Along with investing in these learning processes, we need to invest in the staff as research continues to show that teachers have the highest, largest effect on student success. So, my presentation is in support of the same urgent action needed to continue to be a district on the rise.
One, you guys feel free, I didn't say this, but if you have questions as we're going, feel free to jump in at any time, those questions.
So, our next slide you'll see, it looks very familiar. It was in Mrs. Adams' State of the Schools presentation last month. And part of the next steps going forward was enrollment impact, facilities, and staffing. And that's going to be the bulk of my conversation today. So, as we move forward, to move forward, we have to be able to look backwards out of historical perspective. So, in 2017, we partnered with Decision Insight, which is now called Who Knew It? That partnership was to look at different types of data sets to have a predictive program to look at our enrollment staffing for the next five to 10 years. So, Who Knew It dove into things like birth rates in the area, housing permits being filed, construction schedules, family development, construction. And they used a predictive enrollment model to identify trends over the next five to 10 years. So, our goal was to identify available space for general education classroom usage, identify enrollment boundaries and school capacities, and then compensate for Brenton property going offline by building Somerset and Willoughby to new capacity. So, Who Knew It was able to look and give us two data sets, a conservative data set and a moderate data set. The conservative data set was looked at a little less than what we expected to show up and a moderate a little bit more. So, it gave us a good range of where the actual numbers of kids should fall. So, in the fall of 2018, we had multiple community engagement forums with the community and making modifications from that, looking at the moderate data set. We identified the set we were going to use and then proceeded to draw boundaries and implement our new attendance boundary program. So, in September 9th, 2019, was I presented in front of the Board our new enrollment. And this was the first time that we could actually look at comparing the predicted enrollment from Who Knew It to actual people who showed up to school. As a district as a whole, we were statistically comparable, but what we found was that there were pockets of growth that were unexpected. So, to alleviate some of that, we had to use some of our cultural arts classrooms as general-like classrooms, and we engaged in building-to-building transfer requests as a way to alleviate some of those pressure points. Lance and I went back to Who Knew It and had them help us understand the unexpected differences so that we could accommodate for the 2021 school year. Fast forward to the end of that school year, which was last May, on May 27th, I came back before the Board and gave us an update on the enrollment. And we found that those pockets were even more pronounced. Housing development plans shifted throughout the community that we found. They slowed or stopped in the north part of our community, and then they increased in the south and east part of our community. So, we continue to work with Who Knew It to update their database for the 2021 school year given these new changes. Okay, here we go. All right, so, in the fall of 2020, Who Knew It identified enrollment projections. There were noticeable changes to, were seen in the projection. So, in the blue, it says 2018 Decision Insight data set. That was the original data set that we used. And so, when we looked at that data set and looked at projections of 2021 through 2025, '26 school year, that five-year school year, you see that Amelia was projected to grow 25 students. So, that's about a class size. Merwin was projected to grow 27 students, which is about a class size there, too. Clough was projected to grow 118 students in that timeframe, which is about five class sizes. And Willoughby was projected to grow 188 students. So, you're looking at seven class sizes in that sense. Now, when we redid, looked at the data for the most recent Who Knew It data prediction, we found that those predictions actually flipped for those four schools. Amelia now is expecting to grow in the, between 2021 and 25, '26, 178 students. Merwin's expected to grow 164 students, while Clough is only expected to grow 25. Now, Willoughby was also expected to grow 104, but not the 188 that was expected. So, when we changed capacity, we looked at school capacity, we changed boundaries and looked at school capacity, we were looking at the blue model, and then we moved to this yellow model. Now, we were diving back into figuring, trying to figure out what really changed and how it changed.
Where's WT in this model?
I just grabbed these four as...
All right. They were the most pronounced, like, differences from before and after. So, the other ones stayed pretty much steady, right?
Relatively the same.
Okay.
Yep. So, we dove back into our maps to look at housing developments, dwelling developments, to see what had shifted from that 2018 data set to our most current data set, looking at that '21 to '25 timeframe. And what we found, the Judd Road development is actually, the number of houses predicted to be there actually increased. Klein Station, which also feeds Amelia, they were on our map, but during that timeframe, they were projected to have zero houses being built. And now, they're up to, I believe, 35 or 50 houses being built during that timeframe. Preswood Place development falls within the Merwin boundary. And again, on that '18 map, they were projected not to have any houses built during that timeframe. And now, they're projecting to have 150 houses built, or dwellings built during that time. Merwin Oaks development wasn't even on, wasn't even in existence at that point on our maps in 2018. So, that's a brand-new one, and it's going to feed into Merwin as well.
Where's Merwin Oaks?
It's just southeast of Merwin, Merwin School. So, on the flip side of that, Glen Estee Development and Rumpke Road Developments are significantly down compared to where they were at in our projections. Somewhere along the lines of, during the '21, '25 school year, Glen Estee's development was supposed to have about 200 houses on it, and Rumpke was supposed to have about 800 in this timeframe. And right now, with the current update, they're slated to have zero houses during the '21 to '25 timeframe. So, this helps kind of, helps us understand why the flip in that of where houses, houses were not initially slated to be built as earlier, now being built a lot earlier in the southeast. All right, so, I've been talking about projections, and I really want to talk about actual numbers for a second. Because there's a segment in our population that's very transient. And what that means basically is they move around a lot. And I do updates on enrollment at the end of every week. And I've been, each Friday, there's never been one Friday where I've had no changes. It's always been updates here and there and everywhere. And so, what, the best way to look at true growth is to plant a flag in the sand on one day and then look at that trend that day each year. So, what I did was I picked September 1st of 2017, and I put, this is actual enrollment at the elementary, middle, and high during that time. Then I looked, compared it to September 1st of 2018 and September 1st of 2019. So, in that span of time, for the elementary school, we grew 289 students, which is an average of about 144 and a half kids a year. We grew at the middle school 25, at the high school 21. So, from 2017, '18, and '19, we were showing a pretty good trend of growth, which excites us because the people are moving in our area and they're selecting us as a destination community. Then, of course, the COVID pandemic hit. And so, on September 1st of 2020, I pulled our actual factual numbers. And as you can see there, we're down. 154 at the elementary, 53 at the middle, 36 at the high, which were, so overall, the district, we're down 241 students when compared to where we were at last year.
What does this look like compared to other schools?
To other districts?
Yeah.
From what I understand, it's, we're down as a nation even, not just in Ohio, but as a nation, that enrollment is down, in physical, in-person enrollment.
So, these numbers don't include those that chose the WCOA, or does it?
They do.
They do include, yeah, yeah. So, now, our next, what happened next is we went about to go, okay, let's figure out where these students are, where they went, or why. So, some enrollment factors. Kindergarten enrollment is underrepresented in this number. 73 stu-, we're down 73 students when we were predicted to actually grow. Kindergarten is always a...
Wild card.
Yeah, because you don't necessarily know they're coming in. But we're down 73 from where we were at last year. But one of the interesting facts is that at current enrollment, which was as of last Friday, 26 of our new incoming kindergarteners for next year were old enough to be kindergarteners this year. So, we're wondering if that may be, if parents held those kids out that were able to be held out, and then they're going to come back to us, which may cause our predicted kindergarten class sizes to expand larger than we initially thought. Another factor is parents keeping them home or going through another kind of program and then possibly bringing them back into first grade, which means our first grade numbers now, our kindergarten numbers now may expand larger than we can predict in first grade.
And this is also a national trend?
Yeah. Homeschool trends. Typically, about 3% of kids in the nation are homeschooled. Education Week in November published a survey that said that 9% of the families they researched are engaging in homeschool for the first time this year. So, our current elementary homeschool numbers are up by 25% over last year's. So, they make up 6.4% of our current elementary enrollments. So, we're up about 50 kids engaging in homeschool.
Because homeschoolers still have to tell us, right, that they're homeschooled?
Yes, yes. We also have what's called a lost kid phenomenon. And that's, Dr. Store and I were talking about this late last week of where kids have moved in to the district and we not know that they even belong to us, or kids that are, that should be kindergarten age that didn't enroll. So, we don't even know to look for them. They're there, we don't know to look for them, we don't have anyone out there searching for them, how to account for them in our numbers. So, there is a possibility that they'll show up in, to enroll this summer or early fall. And so, we can't predict how many of those will impact our enrollment going into August. And I put a part up here about the future of elementary open enrollment. So, we have about approximately 130 K-12 kids who live in other districts outside of us that open enroll into us, and that includes, some of that includes our staff, children of our staff. 69% of, or 69 of them are K-5, which is about 1.8%. And the K-12 open enrollment brings an additional $1 million to our district. But the takeaway that I want to make very clear here is that we take care of our kids first. We make sure we have space for our kids first. So, we're not ever going to use, bring in students from open enrollment that will cause a, an adverse size to any classroom. So, part of my job is to be that gatekeeper to make sure that we're not oversizing one grade level or one classroom over another due to open enrollment. If we have space, we take them; if we don't, we don't.
What about the purported baby bust that they're recently talking about? How the opposite of the baby boom, where now there's fewer kids being born, babies being born, which, you know, five, six years from now will obviously affect...
Yeah, that kind of, the baby rate prediction data is in the Who Knew It algorithm. So, that's accounted for, and I'm sure it'll continue to factor after the COVID impact is really understood, probably.
So, as you can expect, there's a domino effect. Enrollment impacts facilities and the capacity that we have to work with the kids. So, if you look up there, this is, knowing that we have a fluctuation of enrollment, we went back and did our due diligence and just re-audited every possible space that we have in every one of our seven elementaries. And so, we're using Clough as a model there. So, Lance and his team and teaching and learning, Ellie and her team, went and looked at the physical space marked where we could put classrooms, where we needed to have small group spaces, special ed unit spaces, special spaces. There's Miss Atlanta's storage. Part of what I'm showing this is the detail that we went through to make sure we could truly identify and maximize every possible space that we would have within each school. All right, so, if everyone, this was, this is based on every child attending the school in which they reside. This take-out building-to-building transfer request, take-out WCOA, this is if we had to have a space for every kid who lived in that school attendance zone, this is the available classroom space that we would have over the next five years. So, in terms of '21, '22, it looks good in '22, '23. But when we start to hit '23, '24, we start to run out of space. Now, I do want to impress upon you all that we will do everything we can do to help alleviate these pressure points and to help maximize as much space as we have using things like building-to-building transfers and stuff like that. But at some point, we are going to have a space issue. So, facilities. If we stay on the predicted course, and when we no longer have enough classroom space for the students enrolled, what are some potential options to ponder or consider? Reconfiguration of our school or grade levels, that may be an option. Adjusting school attendance boundaries again, adding modular classrooms, constructing new school facilities, expanding or adding or renovating current facilities, renting or purchasing other facilities within the community. In addition, there are other ways that we could impact our facilities in the future, enrollment in WCOA, or building-to-building transfers, or even open enrollment. So, as we think through what the next couple of years looks like and as we get in, down, three, four years down the road as well, we really need to start having some serious conversations about what do we want to do with the facilities that we have, and how do we maximize the space to meet all of our kids' needs?
Did you say these available classroom spaces factor in WCOA?
Yes, if we put them all back into the classroom.
Okay, everybody.
Yeah, everybody's back in. And everybody's in the school where they live, and it's not the attendance boundary requested, or the building-to-building request changes. That's usually how he can kind of balance things out currently.
All right, staffing is our next, is our next area. So, I want to point out first that staffing is an investment in our students. When our core business is teaching and learning, it takes a student and a teacher or a staff member to make that happen. So, when we talk about staffing, I really want to look at it under two lenses. The first lens is expanding our staffing. It's, as the number of our students increase, come on up, Dr. Store. As the number of our students increase or shift, we will increase or shift our staff to meet their needs. And as the specialized needs and services of our students increase, we also have to meet that call. As students need different things, we need to be able to provide those things. And also, investing in our staff. So, it's how can we increase their knowledge base and skill set and increasing ongoing support as they implement new skills and knowledge? So, how do we give it to them, and then how do we support them in growth? And then Ellie, Ellie will talk about...
Yeah, you can hang on, that's fine. So, one of those sort of known unknowns is WCOA. We know that this year, in response to the pandemic, we created an online school that we currently have over 1,700 of our students participating in. And so, as we look to next year, clearly, we are going to need to make some decisions about the future of WCOA. So, as part of those, you know, discussions and eventual decisions we'll need to make, we've really wanted to get as much feedback from various stakeholder groups as possible. So, we've conducted surveys of our parents, our students, including our K-3 students, where in that case, we asked parents to help supply, you know, help to submit the answers on their behalf, teachers who are current WCOA teachers, just to get a sense of, you know, knowing that, and at the time of this survey, it was even earlier, you know, pre-March even, just to get a sense of initially kind of a, you know, dipstick at this moment in time, like, where are you in relation to your thoughts about WCOA for next year? And so, we had about between 20 and 30% of our families, so it says 286 responses. We have some families with multiple students in WCOA, so it reflects a larger percentage of our total families. Just to get a sense of what would be your potential future interest in WCOA, specifically asking about next year. And of those surveyed, you know, you can see here, over half of those said that they would be interested in an online option for next year. Of those who said they would be interested in continuing with WCOA, their primary reason of reasons that we, you know, supplied for them related to health and safety. And, you know, especially at the time of the survey, there were still more unknowns as it related to vaccines, as it related to what safety protocols there may be in place, you know, for future school years, those sorts of things. So, health and safety was, and people could, there was like a section for open comments where they could add, you know, additional information. And so, some of the comments, you know, related to family members with health concerns or the students themselves. So, there were a lot of, that was a significant factor at work in people's minds. And then, the second factor for families considering WCOA for the future had to do with flexibility, both in terms of flexibility of the schedule as well as just flexibility for students to sort of learn at their own pace. For those families initially indicating that they wouldn't have an interest in remaining online, interestingly enough, the primary reason for that was also health and safety. And so, my interpretation of that was, we don't think that COVID will be as significant a risk factor in the future. And so, from a health and, from like a well-rounded sense of health and safety, we think it's best that our child return to the building. That, you know, we think there'll be enough protocols in place and, you know, all of those sorts of things. So, it's really interesting that both sides of the coin, I think the impact of COVID is still the most significant factor at this time, kind of playing a part in families' minds. The other factors related to those who thought returning to the building would be the option they choose had to do with just balancing school alongside of other obligations. I think a lot of families who initially, parents may, caregivers had the flexibility of working from home, a lot of families, that situation changed. And so, they no longer had the ability to have someone home that they thought they may be able to have home. Or for high school students who are working and trying to figure out how to like, juggle all of those competing obligations, that was a factor that was fairly significant. And then, you know, the other, and this is kind of also baked into the health and safety, but just, it's hard to be connected with others when you're not physically with others. And so, just the need for students to, either self-reported students saying like, I need to be with people, or families reporting that it's been challenging for their students who just really need more social interaction as a primary factor for them selecting a return. And so, all of those things are clearly like in our minds as we're, you know, thinking about what a potential future for WCOA may look like. And, you know, all along, our goal has been to retain as many of our students within our district as possible while providing a quality education. And, you know, overnight, like, I think we all recognize, it was a significant amount of work to overnight transform a brick-and-mortar district into an additional online district. And so, there've been a lot of lessons that, you know, we've been able to learn from that. And parts of that have been great that we'd want to retain and other parts that we'd like to enhance and improve upon. And so, this is really meant to just kind of indicate, give you sort of an update on where we are currently with our thinking. And the idea is that in April, at our April Work Session, we'll be able to have more, you know, finalized plans. And between now and then, we'll obviously be continuing to update you with that as well. I will say that the biggest kind of growing pain, really, or just pain point generally, has been around grades K-3. You know, it's really hard when students are learning to read to be able to fully engage in an online learning environment. And when so much of it requires just print, being able to access print materials, it's really hard. And we know, as we've shared with you previously, that we're a district where, you know, over half of our students come to us already off-track. And so, that on top of other barriers that are presented by learning online, it's, it's been, that's been our most significant, I think. Just consideration as we try to think about the future for WCOA is trying to decide if that is, if that really can be a great learning model for a majority of our K-3 students. And the other part of it, it really does require a learning coach, AKA parent or other caregiver or outside, you know, support person to really work closely alongside of the student and teacher. And I think families, even with the best intentions, have struggled with that. I think we all have experienced in various forms or fashion what that, the good, the bad, and the ugly of that with maybe our own children or stories of, you know, children. And so, that's the part that, in all honesty, we're really continuing to just wrestle with. And it's something that we're not unique in those challenges and really trying to just evaluate our ability to really offer a robust experience for our earliest learners.
Of those 1,700 students-ish that we have in WCOA, what is that, what does that number of K through 3 look like?
So, right now, we have four sections each of kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. So, if you, and on average, let's just say 30 students. And I could pull up the exact numbers to tell you, but, so, approximately across each of our elementary schools, about 120 for each of the grades K-1, 2, and 3. And again, I could if...
No, that's, that's fine.
I could tell you exactly, but we have four teachers for each of those grade levels currently. So, that's kind of our biggest question mark right now. We're, you know, working, one of the options, to be honest, that we're considering is there are other districts who were exploring the opportunity to potentially partner as part of a consortium of schools because it's something that some of the, some of the districts around us are thinking, are imagining that, you know, they may have five students in grades K-3 who want this option. And they, again, want to retain their students, but to think of like, how are you going to manage that for five students when, you know, the balance of class sizes in the building alongside of that? And so, others are sort of exploring the options of like, if we were to pull together and work in conjunction with like an educational service center as an example, what, how might that, what might that look like? So, maybe we could, you know, pay for that service, be part of, you know, a board of directors that could oversee what happens there is one possibility. Now, that is like an idea that's still on the ground floor, that, you know, the feasibility of that is something that they're trying to work through really quickly for us to explore if that really is a viable option. So, it's sort of like, all right, let's see like where that idea takes us. Part of what I think we might really need to know is like, how many families are really, really talking about that really are, would really want this option? Like, we have this initial, you know, dipstick sort of survey, but like, if we were to have people begin to give us a more firm commitment, that might help us have a better sense of how many families we're really, you know, talking about. You know, part of what we've also created is kind of a profile of a successful online learner. And so, part of this, I think, is about trying to really help educate our families around, based on our experiences this year and the students who have been most successful across the grade levels, what does that really look like? What are those ingredients that really add up to... What are those ingredients that really add up to, like having the right conditions in place to be more likely to have students who have, you know, certain dispositions and mindsets and skillsets, certain supports at, within the family? Just to help people really understand, part of what we're, you know, looking to do is have an experience that is more synchronous in nature, so like more live, in real-time experiences that I think could support not only grades K3, but really all of our grade levels as being something that is, you know, one of those enhancements we're wanting to make. So there's a lot still to be thought through as it relates to K3, but we feel confident that, I'm sorry, we're gonna ask a question, yeah, absolutely.
So when you were saying before that perhaps a neighboring district might have five students that are interested in the WCOA model, would it be a possibility for us to have them open enroll in the district maybe and have our teachers working collaboratively with the other districts so that they're kept abreast of what's going on with that student so that when this is no longer an option, we don't have to worry about WCOA or online learning, that they can transition back and they really feel like they're still part of that community?
Yeah, so one of the things that the consortium is also considering is like a shared service model. So for example, we, there are some districts in our region who right now have some existing like shared service partnerships. So it's most often something you would see like at the high school level where let's say, we would offer, we have a Chinese class that, you know, we typically could have 14, you know, students who would take that every year. And someone else doesn't have 14, you know, or they don't have their own Chinese teacher. And so they may have a shared service model where those students could physically, in the past, like physically travel to the other place to take that course. Now there may be ways through technology, you wouldn't have to like get in your car and drive. So there could be some possibilities to explore potentially like that as well. I think, you know, as more and more districts are beginning to have a clearer idea of what their community is asking for, what they're going to be prepared to offer, I think those possible solutions are easier to maybe picture. Because like right now with 100 unknowns, it's, you're kind of trying to crystal ball it, but when you have, you know, maybe 20 unknowns and 80 knowns, things become a little easier. So they're kind of exploring both of those. That's been part of their work to see if either of those may be alternatives. It didn't include like open enrollment per se, but I think the concept is kind of what I hear you describing. So some more to come on that. And I think people recognize that timing is critical and if we're really going to be able to do this, like you gotta kind of, you know, pick it up. So some more to offer. But as it relates specifically to grades, you know, 4, 8, and really 9, 12, some of the things I've already kind of talked about that we're planning to include as enhancements would be, you know, are required. And this is something that exists now, but it's not necessarily a requirement for students, but just like a required daily morning meeting. It would be in the morning at the, in grades four through eight. And then not necessarily first thing in the morning at the high school, but a required PAC meeting. And that would be true for PAC, whether you are face-to-face student or online, that every day, that's part of what you're doing. As I mentioned, looking at a more synchronous experience, so not to say that there won't be time where students are learning offline, because there will for sure be, but an increased time in those required kind of live interactions with teacher, with other students. Working to build our own curriculum, this year we purchased curriculum through a curriculum provider called Accelerate Education. And that came, like that required an entirely separate learning management system, which that in of itself was like a significant learning curve, not only for teachers, but for families and just the technical like ins and outs of something that was really foreign to lots of people was challenging. And so we're familiar with School-A-G. This year, part of what we did was really build a common agenda, like template. So if you were a kindergartner or if you were a 12th grader, like everybody had sort of a common similar landing page from which to start. And so really being able to kind of continue. And it doesn't mean we wouldn't necessarily need to purchase some resources to support that, but essentially we use our own learning management system and everyone would access their learning from there. And then, you know, there have been sort of not as consistent and, you know, not really, that this year was built around a much more asynchronous experience than ultimately what we'd like to settle at. And so moving to more live, kind of real-time also allows for more small group instruction, more one-on-one supports that we know are really critical, especially when you're learning from home and don't have as many interactions with others. And then at the grades 4, 8, we've also wanted to sort of have these like quarterly pickup kinds of experiences for hands-on kind of learning materials. So whether it's materials that would support a science lab or math manipulatives or whatever it might be, wanting to build those experiences and those materials in for that. And many of those same things would be true at the high school. The biggest difference at the high school is that we would build our WCOA essentially as online courses. And so those courses would become part of our high school course of study. And that students could opt to take, you know, one online course or could take an entire, you know, like the entire course, their entire schedule could be online courses. And that it would, you know, hopefully feel more like, you know, college schedule can now where you can have sort of a mix of those experiences. And that we would build a teacher's schedule as well as student's schedule to reflect, you know, a more of a, if you think more of like a college schedule, it would look and feel a bit more like that. And at the 11th and 12th grade, our focus would really be building time and opportunity for students during their school day to have more experiences that support our WC or future efforts, that give students opportunities for work-study or for internships, experience shifts, those sorts of things that right now they're trying to like cram into like corners of their day in times that really this would provide us some opportunity to build flexibility into their schedules, which is really exciting as we think about the possibilities for that.
Could you talk a little bit about the staff thing? Cause we talked about the magic that happened this year.
Yes, we really did. Dr. Fulton and I, I think we're like bracing ourselves literally like for the absolute worst-case scenario as it related to thinking about, you know, how are we going to hold us off in a way that doesn't mean class sizes in the buildings have to be, you know, double the size in order to have teachers available to teach online? And then we also didn't want to have like 250 kids in a online course so that we could, you know, have room back at the building. So it really was nothing short of like miraculous in many ways, how things really worked out so nicely in that, you know, across our elementaries, the students who had an interest in learning online really was very well-balanced between our buildings and that teachers who really desired either from a health and safety concern perspective or just from an opportunity to learn and teach in a new kind of way, that teachers who, you know, were really expressed an interest in being part of this kind of inaugural experience, that they also were in buildings where we could, where it made sense for us to be able to free up a staff member to teach in WCOA. Like it really was, it really worked out well for us to not have, with very little exception, having to, you know, make some crazy changes to like pull that all off. And, you know, I can't help but like be thinking that like, there's no way it is going to work out so beautifully this like second time around. And because, you know, I'm imagining that even if we had half as many students as we currently do, if we think about that at the elementary level, that may mean two teachers for each of the grade levels. And it's really like, highly unlikely, I'm thinking, that, you know, those two sections worth of a grade level would just kind of as miraculously like pan out across the, you know, between the schools. So that's also a reason why it's going to be important for us to try to, as much as we can, get commitments from families to really understand where they are so that we can build a staffing model that isn't like being built in July. And so that our teachers can have, you know, the time that they need to prepare and we can just let people know where they're going to be working next year. So, you know, it's potential, I think, that we may have to look at additional staff to support WCOA in a way that we maybe just got really lucky this year that we didn't have to, because we know we're not going to be able to have 35 kindergartners in a brick and mortar school so that we can combine, you know, two classrooms and free up a teacher. So that's a big question mark that just kind of still remains that, you know, I think we'd be remiss to not say that, you know, that's a factor that we just don't understand enough about yet.
Well, I wanted to share that I've also often shared with the group that my sister is a high school teacher in North Kentucky, and she's teaching students in her class both in-person and online, and it's a zoo. And when I speak to her about the great things that you guys have done and the creative ways you have done it, she's been very vocal at being impressed with your ability at such a large scale. We're not just a small, you know, 300 student district, but to put this in place, we're 8,500 kids. I mean, she's taken it back to the Boone County schools and saying, well, this is an opportunity that you can do it differently. So kudos to you and the team that, you know, I know that we were a lot stressed back in March, in the 40th of August, like, no, we're never gonna pull this off. But you guys have played, played betrayal and done it very, very well.
Well, and we are excited about the future possibilities and we're wanting to ensure that any decisions that we make for next year in response to COVID, because we really do still know COVID is going to be with us, that we ultimately don't want it moving us further, in a further direction away from where we really see like the highest quality student-centered learning headed. And so that's, that's a significant factor as we, you know, continue to move forward. We don't want to make any decisions that are going to like be like 17 steps backwards when we want to just keep inching towards. I think, you know, still next year, we're going to probably be in a place that's better than where we are now and a continued growth mindset. But because of some COVID factors, we may not ultimately like be able to really be where we want to be, but we want to just keep moving in that direction.
So we go back and talk about core business. It is that teaching and learning concept with the interaction between students and staff. It's essential that we invest in the structural, in the foundational structures that will strengthen that core business and to achieve the desired results. So what you see on the PowerPoint now is three ways in which we want to approach that. The first way is teachers, again, research shows that teachers still make the number one largest impact on student learning. Ways we will invest in educators, we will recruit and retain the best educators and support staff. We'll provide professional learning and instructional coaching opportunities. We'll meaningful collaboration time, updated curriculum to foster deep student learning experiences and enhance student information and data systems. Likewise, with the same research, it says the second largest impact on student success is the building administrator. So ways in which we'll invest in administrators. We'll recruit and retain the best leaders. We're professional learning and leading coaching, support for day-to-day operations, meaningful collaboration time and enhance those student information and data systems. And finally, we're going to invest in the student experience, flexible instructional models, expanding learning opportunities, targeted updates and special education continuum services, social, emotional, and mental health supports, summer learning opportunities, updated curriculum and data systems to help us know our students better. An example, one of the examples of this is why Dr. Storrs here, she's going to talk to us a little bit about those special education continuum services.
So I know that we've mentioned the increasing numbers of students with special education needs in West Claremont. We're seeing a nationwide trend of increasing numbers of students who require special services. In West Claremont specifically, we're seeing a rise in the number of students enrolled with really significant needs. Students who may have medical fragility, mobility needs, students with autism, students with multiple disabilities that require a lot of specially-designed programs and services and supports for them. I think when we talked last time, the number was at like 31, 32%. We've continuing to grow, we're up at 36% increase since August of this year of students being enrolled, not placed in by us, but are enrolling with that level of significant need. And we, in talking with our partners through early intervention and preschool, they're seeing that same level of increase in terms of the student population at that level as well. So we're anticipating that that's going to continue and that we need to prepare for that. So one thing that we've been doing is to really just work with some teams, work with consultants. We're seeking input from parents and teachers and administrators to design and to strengthen programs that will really be a better match for the increased number of students that we have and the increased level of intensity in their needs. And that's pretty much where we've been working, which is also another factor.
Well, and just one thing to note, in terms of the facilities, a lot of times there might be a caseload, eight, 10 students that have these high needs. And so then you think, well, there's probably a small space for eight to 10 people. And there just aren't, there aren't small spaces, so it's a whole classroom. And so when you start looking at shifting 30 students in a class versus eight in the same class, that really starts to impact how we serve across the entire school environment. So that's how sometimes you see specials classes being used or rooms being converted to multipurpose spaces. And so that's just another part of that map that we showed you and all the level of detail that has to be reviewed.
So I'm going to take over from here with this slide. So how are we going to move forward with some of this? And, you know, what our intent is to fill the gaps in both the learning performance and the foundational services. And so as you know, as we talked about in the past, there were some things that this school district did without. There were services that and resources that we didn't have. One of the things that I think we all learned about COVID is that it had no prejudice to learning, to emotional, to social, to physical impact that had on both students and staff and everybody else in the community. So how are we going to go forward with some things or maybe set up some fundamental or foundational guidelines on how we spend money? So one of those is if it is a sustainable service, that means it's something that we truly need and should be core to our business of educating kids, we want to add that, but we want to keep it and sustain it. The ability to do that is to match that with revenue that's recurring. That is, if we're going to get it and we're going to get it not just one year, but we're going to get it in year two, three, and four and forward, we want to do that. Those are primarily local and state sources to do that. Okay? So as we know about that, we're committed to make sure that we line up both that spending with that recurring revenue service, or revenue source. If it's a one-time investment, so we've gotten, and, you know, I've got to really applaud the district because it started, you know, before I got here, that when they, when the district received relief money, okay, it really looked at both, how do we spend that today as an investment so that it meets some need for today, but also into the future? So whether that was in people, whether that was in equipment, the district started that trend over a year ago to do that. The outcome of that was, for example, like with the devices for the students. It really accelerated forward, okay, moved forward, things that we were already going to do in the future, but made them happen today. So the second kind of tenant or guideline that we have is that if we are going to receive one-time-only funding, and that's primarily again, the state and federal, so the CARES money, the SRT2 money that was already announced for us up the road and SRT3 when it comes, okay? Those sources are really for one-time-only expenses as we move forward with it. A third aspect of it, because, you know, education is not as simple as what people think it's complicated. And I think the last two work sessions, you really heard about that, all the way from the curriculum to now we're talking about staffing, now we're talking about facilities. It's, you know, they're not easy things in there. And we like to keep it simple, but one of the simple rules of thumb as we look forward, doesn't mean we're not going to be creative on how we fund things, but we really need to be appropriate- to be creative on how we fund things, but we really need to be appropriate if we look at facilities or we look at infrastructure, okay, it can't be from our operating funds. We've already made some commitments with that operating funds and we really can't use those operating dollars for the infrastructure as we go forward with that, to do that. You heard, I don't know if it was Mrs. Preston or Mr. Foltz, but, but someone said that, you know, COVID brought a lot of questions and a lot of question marks. Well, the commitment of this team, and I know it's a commitment of the board, is that there's no question mark around the commitment that we're making financially, okay? We are going to hold true and stay on the course of if we wanted to be balanced through FY twenty-four, we're going to do that. I think the underlying commitment to that is that if we get additional funds, we're going to spend that wisely, okay? We're going to do our due diligence in making sure that if it's sustainable service, we'll match that with something that needs to be sustainable. If it's a one-time investment, it's going to be a one-time spend on that money. I love the fact that, that everyone spoke about investing and it's, it's really true that we're investing in people and the infrastructure and programs as we move forward. Go back right back to the beginning is, you know, we're in the business of educating kids and that's what we're really, that's what that ultimate investment is in, no matter what we spend that dollar on. So that commitment is still there. There's some future forward guidelines that we're setting up so that as, as we get the opportunity of some additional funding, local, state, or federal, we're using it appropriately.
So as we start to summarize the presentation this afternoon, I want to talk about a few takeaways. Number one is enrollment fluctuates. Even with the best predictive tool, enrollment will always be a moving target. This fluctuation has a direct impact on the capacity of school buildings and staffing needs. And we'll continue to work with, with enrollment tools to make sure that we always have the best, the best prediction as possible each and every time. So we update that multiple times throughout the year. Number two is we need to continue to explore alternative programs and policies to identify and implement viable options to alleviate enrollment pressure points until such time as we're ready to explore more permanent change options. Number three is we need to begin discussion on a new master facilities plan. And number four is we need to address essential staffing needs to maximize the resources and time that we have available to grow our students. So next steps for us, we'll continue to prioritize investments to address student learning goals and gaps. We'll recruit and retain the best educators to increase academic achievement and expand educational opportunities. We'll complete a district-wide enrollment survey. We want to learn the education intentions of our students for the following school year. We will determine the evolution of the West Claremont Online Academy. We will conduct regular updates on kindergarten enrollment and plan accordingly. We will complete staff surveys to learn their intentions about returning to West Claremont for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And we will continue to prepare and update the five-year forecast in May.
So we just wanted to be clear about kind of where we are in March and we'll continue to bring even maybe deeper developments to you in our March twenty-second meeting, some more specifics around WCOA, some more specifics around staffing so that we can begin the survey process and be able to unfold these details to our families in April. So we want to get as many details kind of understood among all of us leading up to spring break so that after spring break, we can make sure that the families are well informed of our, of our next steps and can plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And so we just want to make sure that tonight, first of all, your questions are being answered, that it's kind of clear, the status on each of these topics, and then to see if there's any kind of other questions you might have or if there's other data that you would like to understand or see to, to better kind of influence where you might direct us next on these, on these big topics. And again, these are activities we do every year. There's just new variables in, in this, in the situation that we want to make sure is clear to everyone. So just any, any questions or comments about stepping forward?
Excuse me, did I miss, was there talk about curriculum?
Um, well, we didn't tonight. In, in terms of our investments, you saw, you saw that on the, the puzzle pieces. We do plan going forward in investing. We're specifically, you know, we've, we've been able to pour some finances based on grants into literacy. And so we want to move on to math. That's kind of where we have our head next is figuring out how we can update that and bring in tier one, tier two, and tier three resources that will help our students both learn the core material and with, and be provided interventions and enrichments to support that. So that's kind of what we have on the horizon. You know, when we surveyed teachers on a couple of different platforms recently, just to understand like pain points for them and, and challenges, especially in the elementary, just wanting that sense of a more well-rounded experience for students was really, really important. And they were hoping, they, there hasn't been math and science and social studies infused dollars for quite a while, so they were kind of craving all of that. And we want to be able to just, you know, begin going with our next steps with, with being with math. This is kind of where our heads are. And then we'll kind, we'll just work on a cycle from there because it's important that we update and modernize all of our curriculum, make sure that the right digital tools are in people's hands and as, as Ellie had mentioned, in the learning management system, being able to have the right tools inside of that that will give feedback right to the teacher so that they can easily see by looking at a dashboard, you know, these kids are understanding it, these kids need more support. And it's, it can just make it a more efficient process through some of that, you know, the digital means.
Is this college platform we talked about something we see other schools heading, other districts heading towards?
In terms of the high school scheduling experience, yeah. I, I would say we're fortunate to, in, with, in Southwest Ohio, we are a really strong networked group of like teaching and learning professionals. And so we've been like constantly collaborating and sharing with one another. And so I would say that almost like school by school by school, that's really a model that, that most high schools are looking to have these online courses be more embedded within their schedule. I will say that, you know, depending on the number of online courses that a child would like choose, so let's say if they're only selecting like one online course, their schedule is going to look fairly traditional, especially if you're a freshman or a sophomore. You know, you've got to get your core courses underway in order to, you know, earn your credits, et cetera. So that will look a little bit more traditional. It's really like in the junior and senior year especially and this, and the, depending on the number of online courses that you may take where, where that flexibility really kind of takes hold a bit more. But yeah, I, again, almost like every school who's planning an online option is really wanting to embed it more as part of the high school experience in that way.
And I will say, I was with a group of superintendent's the other day and we were kind of going around the table, kind of asking like, where is everybody in this? I feel like we're being very aggressive in it. We have a building principal and, and his team that is, that, that has been walking through this and talking about it with teachers and are very excited about opening up this door of flexibility because they've been listening to students, they've been listening. And so I would say some are still talking and maybe we'll be doing this in the future. We're, we're going to be able to act on some of this next year. And so it, it, it's definitely just something I think unique and special here that we, we have teams that are ready to activate, I guess.
And that it really is sort of an opportunity to have a schedule reflect this, like I said before, the kinds of things that we've been trying to just like put a square peg in a round hole, you know, kinds of ways that this really does allow us to think a bit more creatively and flexibly. And also it's going to mean some creativity and flexibility on the part of teachers. Like it's going to be really important for the role of the educator in all of this to continue to shift and adapt as well. And so in the same way that we've really kind of been able to reveal our like portrait of a graduate alongside of that work, you know, and that's going to be a significant part of work to come in the future is really thinking about the roles of educators and how with schedules that look different for students, you know, that also means thinking differently about how we can, as educators shifts our roles to, to best support those things as well.
Well, and I was meeting with high school students and middle school students this week, but one of the high school students isn't, she works and when we were explaining this concept of a more flexible junior, senior year, she's a senior, she was like, oh my gosh, that would have been awesome because the, my place of employment, they get really busy from like noon to two and I've always wanted to be there and work from noon to two and like really see how it all works because she has the, the later shift after school. And so it was just very cool to her to see I could open up so many more learning opportunities by just being able to shift the time I'm able to spend at work. And so I just thought that was a cool insight that, that, that she kind of would take advantage of. And so I, I really feel like as, listening to students and what Randy has done with his team over the last two years, it's, it's kind of like combining the flexibility of like what March twenty-twenty did to our lives with a, with a structure of traditional school and just trying to figure out how you get the best of both worlds kind of merged together for, for students who have grown that independence. Because I, I met specifically with WCOA students, they were live in person this week from the middle school, six, seven, and eight. And the thing they were most proud of, they were like, we can do so much on our own. Like they, they, they just thought they're, they felt like they've matured, you know, beyond measure and that they're independent and they're just, I mean, to, you know, it didn't matter if you were sixth grader or eighth grader, like that was the thing they were most proud of.
Has this affected like students who are trying to obtain early college credits? Has this affected them and moving forward?
Like in a negative way?
Yes. And moving forward, do you think this model will kind of help that?
So right now, we haven't had to reduce any of our like college credit plus offerings. Those have really remained, and if anything, there's even been more flexibility in how students have been able to access those courses because universities have also, you know, they've also gone virtual. So I think that's actually worked in their favor, you know? And one of the things that we did this year was through the junior, senior flexibility, allowing students the opportunity to only take the courses that were required for them for graduation, which then freed up more additional opportunities for students to explore, you know, to have time to devote to work or, you know, other related sorts of things, I think has, has, has really helped kind of continue to accelerate students and their opportunities. So, so I think that's one of those things that we're wanting to build a full pathway experience that isn't like, we're just trying to like hurry up and get a bunch of people out of here, but that like shoring up your core required courses can also now provide you the opportunity to do these other things that really provide a more robust, well-rounded kind of experience of learning opportunities.
I, I think it'll explode. And, and I did have some students who, who just meant, they were just some, some very like specific career fields they were interested in that we don't have courses for. You know, like this would be so awesome because it would give me a chance, I could take that. You know, microbiology, engineering, whatever, that's, that's maybe not available here right now. So I think the potential is certainly there.
This model sounds really cool because I mean, it further prepares them for the next step.
Yeah. And I think too, we're wanting, now I just lost my train of thought for a second, thinking of what you were saying a bit exploded. Oh, the other part I think that we're trying to do is, is think about offering more opportunities for students, like there's something called credit flex where students have the opportunity to earn credit flexibly. I mean, that's like the name that, that I feel like is really underutilized here in West Claremont, that students could create their own pathways to earning credit through a wide range of possibilities. So whether that's taking a course through, you know, another, you know, so, so like, I'm trying to think of it, like William &amp; Mary, for example, they have like lots of courses that are, you know, sort of unique and interesting to a certain like segment of students. Like you could take this online course and successfully do X, Y, Z things. It's not a course we like even, you know, offer and then you can earn credit for, you know, doing that. That's like one small example, but I think there are ways that we can help educate our students and our families about possibilities that this just continues to open the door for.
And right now, a possibility like this would have to be on top of a full day of seven-period classes. And so now we're just saying like, let's, let's build this inside of so it's not an on top of because there's only so many hours in the day. It's exhausting. I also would add, and this kind of relates to Jim's question and yours, is the reason you'll see this word of investing in teachers' planning time as a part of the story, there, there needs to be time to process all this. Like if you're doing the, the seven-period day grind, you're not, you're not able to see how this flexible schedule and how they, how they could be working in the community alongside of our students. Like you need time to be able to like explore this and see what it looks like with your students. We have to, as educators, be learners right alongside. And the kind of planning and the professional learning that we have kind of takes all that into account and that we're wanting to make a big investment in that. Because you could see like if, if a student is working when you're like, well, they should be in my class, we're not, we're not trying to like eliminate options for kids from, from being able to take classes. We just want to expand experiences in general. Any other questions that you guys have or just comments on, on what you're learning today and what, what's on your mind?
Well, Ellie mentioned that, you said the square peg in a round hole and I think the way you fit that square peg in the round hole is to make the hole bigger. And to do that is you expand your, you expand what we're doing here, you know, expand the possibilities and to, to make that work. I think that's a great analogy. I think my question is not necessarily on school boundaries, but on, on the district's boundaries. Is there any looking at the district's boundaries as a whole to alleviate or accommodate enrollment numbers? I mean, is it, you know, if we're, I mean, the neighborhood right across from the high school is not in West Claremont. I mean, but we also, but we have parts of our district that are ten, fifteen miles away that are in our district. Is there, are they better served by a different district whereas the people right across from our high school, are they better served by us? I mean, is that a possibility to help or is that just throw more mud into the, into the path to, to wade through? And then I think my next is the, the state. Any, are you hearing anything or seeing anything where the state really won't allow us to have more flexibility, you know? Are they, I, I know that right now because of COVID, there's a lot of flexibility, but are they going to say, you know, hold on now, you know, you've, you know, we've, we've loosened those reins too much, you know, we got to pull it back and, you know, you guys are doing a whole bunch of stuff that, you know, we don't approve of.
Well, Ellie did do some investigating with our legal team on some of these because we were, especially the, the WCOA needing to be able to continue that. And all signs point right now that that's going to be a continued allowance. And so we have to keep our eye on that because there's lots of legislation pending right now and lots of moving parts and pieces, but there's nothing in our plans right now that don't follow, fall under something that is, is a guideline or an opportunity inside of, of the O D E rules.
And I think my one, it's not a complaint, but I would really hope that our, the, our start times for our buildings are reviewed in this whole process as well because I really, the middle school starting at seven o'clock is a really thorn in a lot of people's sides. Not necessarily mine, I don't have middle school students, but I mean, it's.
It's been a thorn in our, my side for years, but when we, every time we take a look at it, it is cost prohibitive because we have, have shared busing with the parochials. In order for us to run one single bus, they run, you know, the, the middle school early, then they go parochial and then they pick up the elementary kids. It would cost, I don't remember what it, it was millions for us to, to change the start times and it just wasn't feasible.
And I think this comes into the, the investing part, you know, is, you know, what's the trade-off? We're, you know, what are we saving versus having kids, you know, up at five-thirty in the morning, you know, to be at school at seven or teachers and staff up at four o'clock to drive thirty, forty minutes, you know, round trip, you know, to be at, at, at school twenty minutes before school starts at seven, you know? And, you know, what's the trade-off if, you know, that, you know, if that time moves, how does it affect the other schools, you know, do, can all elementary start at the same time? Can, you know, that type of thing? So, you know, I just, I think that's my goal or not goal, but request is, is that all of that is taken into consideration in this planning process as well. that is taken into consideration in this planning process as well.
Lance, do you want to say anything?
I mean, what I would say, and that is, as simple as it seems, it's extremely complicated.
Oh, I, I'm sure, yeah. That's why I'm not, it's just a request, you know, type of thing, and I understand the process, but, you know.
It's definitely a topic that comes up even internally quite often, so it's something that we are always trying to find a unique way to make it that, as Ellie said, square peg fit in that round hole. So, and we will continue to do so.
Right. Well, and I would think that that would tie in with the attract portion, you know, if you, you know, to attract better, not better, but, you know, quality middle school teachers, you know, who don't have to start at seven o'clock, you know, or 6:30, and, you know, it's, it makes it a little more appealing, I guess.
I have a question about the special education numbers, the increase that Dr. Store commented
on. Is this a trend that other districts are seeing, or is it just something unique to West Claremont?
I'm not certain what the trend is exactly like in other districts, but in just some of the conversation we've had with other districts, they are seeing several families move back to the district, from some of the private facilities that they've been choosing to go to, or through scholarship, coming back to the district. So I think that there, that could be, it's possible that it is, but I don't know for sure their numbers. We can look into that.
Okay. I, I was just curious to see if, you know, are we, are we the, you know, the sparkling unicorn in the room, or is this something that's happening, you know, regionally, you know, community-wise, Claremont County, you know, whatever?
Yeah. I know that we do have some students moving back in, but when I heard that the numbers are also increasing at the early intervention level, at the preschool level, that really did make me think that it's a trend, and just in general.
I think several years ago, I recall that there were some families that were pleased about the services that we were rendering, and they were sharing it with other people, and they were pleased with people's enrollment process, because they were able to get their, their students within the district. Which again speaks to what you guys are doing with your plan there.
There are, there are nationally higher incidents of, of the high needs, though, like in general, I mean, you have seen that. Absolutely. There's, there's a, a significant increase in the number of students that are being identified with autism, and not over-identified, truly and honestly identified. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a trend in general that there's an increase, and that is nationwide. And that's why the, the team has been working so hard to kind of expand and delineate our continuum of services, so we can serve those kids here to the very best of our ability. We, we would love for them to stay in West Claremont and not have to go to another program or facility. We want to be able to do it here. So they've done a really great job in their planning, and we're excited. Yeah, very excited. Other questions, or things you want us to be thinking about or bringing back to you as it relates to these big three topics?
I mean, I know I've said it before, but everyone, you know, COVID has knocked everybody down, but I honestly, I think it's, it's made us better. I mean, we've, we've grabbed it by the horns and, and really, you know, brought us up above and beyond where a lot of other people are, and it's, it's, it's showing, it really is. So thank you for everything that you've done for everyone.
Well, I think now is, I mean, you know, like Ellie said, that, you know, there's the belief, I think, in general, that, you know, we're coming to, not to the end of COVID, but to, you know, a closer end. I mean, you know, not, you know, a year ago, but I mean, I, you know, to put on what Michelle said, is I applaud the team in that, you know, the, the ability to see the opportunities and beginning to act on them early in the crisis, you know, puts us in a great position now, whereas a lot of other either districts or even companies are just, just now looking at, you know, well, what opportunities do we have post-COVID, or, you know, towards the end of COVID, where, you know, we have a lot of those plans and are ready to just almost, we're almost at the implementation stage, you know, we're, you know, finalizing those plans. But those ideas started, you know, months ago, and I applaud everybody for that effort.
And that's why we're excited to be able to support our teachers more effectively with the planning that we, we will provide, the professional development that will provide the resources, because I think they've maxed out. I mean, their, their ability to bend and flex has been incredible, and in order for us to kind of get on that next level, the podium, to carry out these ideas, we need to support them differently. And so we're excited about some of those opportunities coming this way, that will in turn be great benefits for kids. Well, that's it for our presentation this evening. You know, we've got a big fat to-do list after that conversation for sure, but, but we're really excited about the progress, and, and know, like this week, we'll be meeting with our, our association teacher leadership team to kind of review this a little bit more in-depth, and then I will send more out to the teachers and do a superintendent articulation with each of the staffs, just to give them time to kind of react and give feedback as, as they kind of weigh in, as, as we keep kind of rowing forward in, in our plan. So it should be very helpful. They're, they're not shy, they will, they will let me know how they are feeling about things, and so it, it just always helps make our plans just a little bit better, so.
Putting on to the agenda?
Yep.
Next up is the board of directors, do we have anything that we need to? No recent year withdrawals, do executive...
Not, not...
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mrs. Delaney, invited by Mr. Schaaf. Call?
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Five yes. We're adjourned.
Yes.